As a preliminary matter, this is John Reagan Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Aye.
Mark Kishen Allen.
Present.
Sierra Samara.
Aye.
Jason Assarifi.
Aye.
Town official and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Town planner Adam Menard.
Here.
Snap assistant Danielle Chamberlain Roberts.
Here.
Good evening, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 now called to order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. This meeting the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. Remote access information is posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Vision. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being known accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Any that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is A and R Auburn Water District, 6 Southbridge Street. Is anyone here representing the Water District?
Good evening, Greg Woods with the Auburn Water District. Correct, correct.
You go all the way up to Sword?
Correct. Correct. The district has been working with the Department of Transportation for close to three years now to purchase this small parcel of land to facilitate our long-term plan of doing an interconnection with the city of Worcester. And we would need a pressure-reducing building to reduce the pressure from Worcester to our system. So we have finally got that parcel of land, that approximately 1,200 feet, square feet, and we will be constructing a prefabricated 11-by-22 concrete building to facilitate the instrumentation for that. No, it'll all be above ground. The building will be above ground, obviously the main will be underground. I think it's about 15 pounds higher than ours.
Really?
Correct. I believe the triangle to the south, right before it comes into the entrance to the distribution center, is still going to be retained by the DOT. So to the north is 4, Southbridge Street, an existing parcel. So this small piece would be 6.
No questions.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? Does this work where if our pressure drops below a certain point, the valve opens up to keep us full of water for fire protection? I know the town of Dedham did that with the MWR, I was just curious.
We have two pressure-reducing valve locations in our system. One side of the town has high pressure, one side has low. The side towards Prospect Street and the West Street side of town, that's the high pressure. So there's a pressure-reducing valve near Eddie Pond Apartments there on Route 20. And there's also one at our Church Street facility. So if there's low pressure on the low-pressure side, water will flow from the high to the low. But in this case, this interconnection will be purely if we need water from a supply perspective, not necessarily a pressure perspective.
So if the pressure drops below a certain point, is it automatic? You guys have to actually get out of the valves?
It would be fairly automated based on tank elevations. And if it did get, the tanks did drain to a certain point, that valve would open up.
So the construction of the facility itself, that's going to come in after, right?
Correct.
Should there be a site plan for that as that's developed?
Okay. Sounds good. Just enough to get a truck to do the rounds, that's about it.
Did the DOT give you a curb cut for your driveway?
I don't know.
If they have, it'll be the next hurdle you left to cross. So I don't see one showing. But I don't know if there's a curb there or a sidewalk. Maybe just dirt so you can just drive in. I don't think there's a curb there myself.
There's a sidewalk in front of 4. I don't think it extends any further past 6 down to that corner.
Anybody else have any questions? May I have a motion approved as submitted?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Samara?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Reagan, aye. It is a vote. You gotta sign it. Say the other side, yeah. Too much of a hurry. I gotta finish taking the rest of them, right? Russ could be doing regular pen, right? What, your pen? You're right.
It's past here. Somewhere goes.
I don't care.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Next on the agenda is applicant Kimberly Horn Associates requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for self-storage facility at 319 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 42, parcel 31. This has been continued from our 2/27/23 meeting. Is there anyone here representing Kimberly Horn?
Yes, continuance. They just got a partial review back from Graves last week. We're still waiting on the stormwater updates, so we still have a little bit of work to do.
May I have a motion to continue this to our next meeting in August? May I have a second? Sierra? Garkas? Myself, aye. John Reagan, aye. Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky of GL McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for two lot single-family home development with site improvements on property located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass. 01501. Is there anyone here representing Mr. Lemansky?
They requested a continuance this afternoon. They just got comments back. I submitted comments to Graves, updated plans on Thursday. So Graves is working on the updated peer review at this time.
May I have a motion to continue this to our August meeting? Thank you. May I have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor, Sierra? Garkas?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, aye. It is a vote. They continue to our next meeting. Other business, I am going to skip ahead to the modification on 9 Mark Street. If no one has any objections, I believe that gentleman's sitting right here. We can deal with our stuff afterwards.
Graves just gave you that stuff.
All of these? Okay. That's Claire Drive. We are a little bit of a loss because we just got the review. I just got handed to me from Graves.
Let's try to make it easy because we did a lot of. Mid-last year, late-last year, we were in front of the board for site plan review for proposed just over 11,000 square foot addition to their existing facility out there. They're under construction, building's up, things have been going pretty well out there. And we're seeking a minor modification to some drainage designs and infrastructure that we found to be necessary based on some of the existing drainage conditions that were uncovered as part of the excavation and things of that nature. Just to give a recap, back in the end of last year, we looked at the orange as a proposed addition. What we did was, a number of years back, there were some explorations that were conducted on the existing underground drainage infrastructure associated with the existing building. The information that we've uncovered at that time, we believe that all of the rooftop drainage from the blue shaded area on this side was collected in an underground drainage system. All the leaders came downspouts down the back and discharged off into the rear direction and connected somehow to the pond in the back. Little curious, so we had some cover our butt notes on the plan about coordination in the field and the like. Subsequent to the construction ongoing and finding out what we did, we were correct. Our assumption was all the rooftop did go off into this area. We had the contractor chase that line, where did it go? We snaked it, found the end, and unfortunately, it wasn't really connected to where we thought it was. It just ended in a big pile of boulders out in the back. We talked with the, and it just happened to point right towards where the sewer main was in the back. So we spoke with the engineering department, they went out and cambered the line to determine that there was no illicit discharges. So rooftop's not going into the drainage system. That's a good thing. But the bad thing is, what are we going to do with it now? Some of our assumptions were not correct, or maybe the underlying conditions weren't very well-known until we uncovered it all. So what we did was, our original drainage calculations assumed all this water to flow this way, and we were looking at a drainage system, underground drainage system, that would treat the existing rooftop only. Existing conditions would be remained as it was. Fortunately, this wasn't the case. So this was really brought to our attention in more concern or urgency. A few weeks ago, we immediately reached out to the engineering department, we met. They recommended that we go forward, make sure the Conservation Commission is going to be suitable with our proposed improvements, which I'll go over real quickly in a moment. So we immediately got on one of their agendas to talk about the proposed changes that we're looking to implement. We didn't have a formal design at that point, but wanted to give them a heads-up as quick as possible. And so we had that meeting a couple of weeks ago. We actually had a site walk last week, this past weekend with the Conservation Commission. We're going to be in front of them as well to review this. We also took the initiative to work with Mr. Menard to get Graves Engineering on board sooner than later because we're in the middle of construction, we don't want to prolong anything with exposed surfaces. We want to get the project done, stabilized and out the door. So Graves has reviewed and just provided this afternoon a letter regarding our proposed amendment, that our calculations and our proposed modifications are in order engineering-wise. Those modifications are, what we're doing is, as you recall, this whole area, you said was going to go into the back and out somehow. So what we did was, just based on construction, we're going to collect the orange portions and put it into the existing underground drainage. It's just a matter of repiping the drain downspouts. The area that's in orange equals the area that was considered in the future. So what additional area that we did not consider was obviously the half of the roof that we found to be inadequate ultimate connection. That equal area is the blue area here. So what we're proposing is just to have a small above-ground basin, some minor depressions, only about 2 and 1/2 feet deep, to collect the rooftop drainage only, detain it, and then just outlet towards the wetlands in the back. So all of this work falls within the existing limit of work and disturbance. So we're not expanding our development footprint anywhere, in any location. We're just looking to implement a minor drainage basin, very small in nature, to detain what we originally thought was just going away, you know, off to the pond. So with that, you know, we took the initiative to work with Graves. I think they're in agreement with our findings that, you know, this is sound engineering practice, but wanted to, obviously speak, not wanted to, we need to speak with the board to make sure we are in agreement that this is, you know, a minor modification, we can move forward without, you know, subsequent permitting or anything else that may be necessary. You know, so with that, I'll open it up to, you know, the board for any questions and comments you may have.
So maybe for, actually for you, Jim, the, what is the timeline? I know this is, construction's ongoing, so what is the timeline you're looking for from an approval standpoint? Because we haven't reviewed the Graves work yet.
From a timeline, we took the initiative to get this done. So the timeline is as soon as we are able to get a comfort level from everybody involved, which will be the Planning Board as well, Conservation Commission, we are set to meet with them on the 26th of this month. And depending on, well, I wouldn't say depending, we just received the Graves Engineering letter, which supports our engineering calculations. I'm going to initiate that with the engineering department as well because we also need to update our land disturbance application from them, just to make sure that they're on board. So it's kind of a, it's a trifecta. We need to talk to CONCOM, Planning Board and Engineering, and they're all moving forward. So we're doing this as expeditiously as possible because it's an existing construction site, we want to keep it moving. And really, this is really almost the last piece of lipstick that we have to put on it. Paving should be happening this week for the parking area up front. And the last remaining items are just trying to handle that drainage discrepancy from what the original plans were.
Looking at our schedules, if our next meeting is August 8th, and if we get the Graves review, I mean, if we have the chance to review the Graves, you know, report? Oh, he just read it.
It's two paragraphs that says the calculations are expedited. So, you know, I would hope that, unless there's any unforeseen comments or concerns that you may have tonight, that we can address in our discussions. We would hope to get maybe a decision whether it's a de minimis or a minor change, or we need to go to the next step. If we need to go to the next step, I'll take those initiatives immediately tomorrow to go there. But I think engineering-wise, we're sound, I think Graves agrees with it, we're within the existing limits of work, so there's no new land alterations. We're just really going to be dropping in a very small detention area to handle a small portion of the roof that we originally anticipated being routed around to the existing pond. But we found that being uncovered, it's not in a suitable condition to be reused.
Maybe for John and Adam, so if we accept this modification, would that be under the condition that Conservation Commission is approving it? It has to be, right?
Yeah, that's. Yes. This is definitely within their buffer zone, so we need to have them agree with the modification as well.
It'll be inspected by all the pertinent parties, conservation and engineering, everybody. So they're already well aware and moving forward on it.
Anybody else have any questions?
I would defer my thoughts to John because he's in that field and that. If he thinks it's a minor change, which I kind of think it is, and if he's okay with that, then I would be contingent upon the other people in the Conservation Commission and everybody.
I just have a couple of questions. One, by making that drainage area there, the depression, does that impede any of the original parking spots?
No, this was completely within a lawn area. Right now, all our parking is here, so this, from this right here up was just grass. We originally showed a berm there because we had some soils that weren't suitable, and unfortunately, the site was very tight. They're like, we can't put a stockpile here, we're getting rid of the dirt so we can move our machinery around. So basically, this area, right where this is, is an existing lawn area. No pavement, no parking, no impedances, no landscaping or anything that had to be modified, it was strictly just a lawn.
And the discharge that goes to a wetlands?
Yep. There's a wetland in the back here. The existing discharge is located here with a riprock outfall. We're going to be putting them side by side with the stabilized riprocs there then.
Where's the sewer main in relation to?
The sewer main runs down this corridor here to a manhole about here, cuts over at 45 to here, then runs down. So we do have a small crossing here, but there's no conflict vertically.
Sewer should be probably 8, 5 to 8 feet deep.
Yeah, it's around 7 or something to that effect. So we're well beyond, you know, below the wetland line and the discharge to the pipes, so there's no conflict. We took a look at all that, we have all the as-built information from the sewer line.
You said the bottom of the basin is 2 feet deep from the top of the high point?
Yeah, from the berm is 3, 3.25. That's to the tippy-top of the berm, and we have a foot of freeboard. So we're really, you know, only going to experience about 2.2 feet of water. And we kind of flattened out the slopes, we didn't do the 2-to-1 slopes, I think we have 4-to-1 or 5-to-1, you could really drive your pickup truck down there, but normal maintenance lawnmowers will be able to navigate those slopes. We made them so it could be maintained easier.
All of a sudden done, is the entire lot fenced in?
No. There'll be a security gate here to prevent anybody from off-hour deliveries and things of that nature, but it will not be completely fenced in all the way around. You could walk around and get in.
My only concern is after rainstorms like this week. Get some kid down there on a weekend, because he can walk around right to it, and we need to put a fence around that area, like a 4-foot little chain link fence?
This is truly a detention area. So our pipe is to de-water, we're not infiltrating. The soil underneath this isn't really indicative of infiltration practices. So we actually have an outlet pipe. It will flood up, but within several hours, it will drain because it's not truly a detention pond, I mean, a retention pond, it's a detention pond. So we're really just slowing the water down, we're not accounting for any infiltration. So you'll find it de-watering much quicker than you would a normal infiltration laser.
Anybody else have any questions? I'd like to defer that fence to the engineering or building inspector.
I'd like to see the fence to.
We'll let them make that decision. I mean, it is only 2 and 1/2 feet deep, but 2.2 feet. May I have a motion to approve condition?
Motion is minor.
A motion that it's a minor change?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor, Sierra? Garkas? Jason? Myself, John Reagan, aye. May I have a motion to condition this with approval from the Conservation Commission, the Engineering Department and the Building Commission?
So moved.
May I have a second? All those in favor, Sierra? Garkas? Jason? Myself, John Reagan, aye. Now may I have a motion to approve this based on those conditions I just placed?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor? Myself, John Reagan, aye. It is a vote. Good luck. You're all set. Good luck.
I thank you very much for assisting. Get that letter from Graves as soon as we could. It's very important to keep things moving, so. We tried to do what we could. Thank you all. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is reorganization of the planning board. We need someone to nominate someone to be chairman.
I'll nominate John Reagan as chairman.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 May I have a motion to nominate a vice chairman?
I'll nominate David as vice chairman.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Sierra? Why you can't vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. Just reorganized. Next on the agenda is CM RPC delegates. Are you looking for someone?
Call last year, last few years, CM RPC, if you're not familiar, is the regional planning commission. The town has three delegates and one alternate to the commission. Planning board responsible for appointing two of those delegates. Traditionally, at least one of those member delegates has been somebody from the planning board. In the past, it's been, the other delegate's been a staff member. I haven't approached any staff about being a delegate. I think Todd Coran was a delegate and Druckes is a delegate. So if somebody would like to be a continued, or somebody else wants to be a delegate, we have the option of two from this board.
When do they meet? When does it meet?
It's quarterly. They have quarterly meetings. They usually meet on a Thursday. They're meeting in person yet, or they?
No, it was, they had a summer meeting, but the one for the first quarter was.
Virtual, so I think they'll probably stick with a virtual for now. Then they have an annual dinner in June, which is kind of a nice event. We'll need twenty four, twenty three delegates and an alternate, so if you'd like to attend it.
To it, yeah.
So.
Great.
So we'll need nomination for delegates. Second.
If we nominate Druckes?
Yep.
No, I think it'll be good if Jason and Sierra.
We have a motion to nominate Jason and Sierra to be delegates to the CM RPC?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor? Druckes? Ron? Myself, John Reagan, is aye. It is a vote. We have two new delegates. Registry, signatures are already done, right?
Last year's were. To do this, just just sign your name. This is so the registry can sign A and R plans for the registry. Sign your name, I'll fill out the determines stuff. Have to receive your signatures annually.
Next to a decision on seven forty four South Street, one thirteen Washington Street.
Simon's.
May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our May twenty third, twenty twenty three meeting as submitted? May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, yeah?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Reagan, is aye. It is a vote. May I have another motion to approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting of June twenty seventh, twenty twenty three as submitted? Thank you. All those in favor? Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Reagan, is aye. It is a vote. No new business under.
I'll second. We didn't second the previous one.
No, we didn't second it.
We got it done.
We got it done. Thank you.
No new business under seen by the chair. Remember town plan or update?
No update tonight.
May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Danny?
Myself, John Reagan, is aye. The meeting is now adjourned.